Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our open board meeting of December 9. It's now 5:02, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I would like to have someone do the flag salute. Oh, Mr. Mead, would you like to do the flag salute for me?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, President Marcus.
But I have a flag for you, so.
Oh, that's great. Okay. Please stand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a report of closed session, Dr. Brighi?
Yes, we do.
Mrs. Marcus, I just need you to approve.
I'm sorry, approve the agenda.
Thank you.
And have a motion. Prove the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five and oh. Okay. Report of closed session, Dr. Brighi.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. In closed session, the board voted five to zero in favor of settlement OAH case 2020090989. And in closed session, the board took action five to zero to notify the temporary certificated employees identified by employee numbers KG 6376069, WN 1837291, FD 6628278, CK 2957090, YG 0619681, PP 6286011, BE 6745718, MG 5275895, WY 0508290, PU 1594910, RR 3505224, that the employees will be released from their temporary contract effective June 10, 2021, and non-re-elected for the 2021-22 school year and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. There were five ayes, zero nays.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brighi. And now I will return it back to you, and we have a very large number of great presentations this evening. I'm looking forward to them. So it's all yours, Dr. Brighi.
Thank you, and we're very excited to be able to bring you a lot of student and staff recognition. This particular board meeting, we'd like to start off with some of the sensational work we're doing. And like to kick it off with Mrs. Kaber, who is going to start to talk about Black History Month and the wonderful students and teachers that we have in front of us today.
Hi, Dr. Brighi and Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm here with four students, two fifth-grade students and two fourth-grade students. Before I introduce them, I just wanted to share that we've been working really hard to focus this month on making sure that we incorporate Black history into our teaching and just a chance for us to really put some focus on what should be happening all throughout the year. We made ourselves a goal, both at the district level and at the site level, that we're telling the story of how Black people influenced the positive things that happened in America. And so I'm so happy to have four students with me. I have Nathan Chung, who is in Ms. Hess's fifth-grade class. I have Mello Fard, who's also in Ms. Hess's fifth-grade class. Ahima Austin Agana is in Ms. Timmerman's fourth-grade class. And Gia Mahia is in Ms. Smith's fourth-grade class. And that's, I believe, the order that they're also going to speak in. So I'll give it over to Nathan.
All right. So, good evening. My name is Nathan Chung. I am in fifth grade, and I am in Mrs. Hess's class. Our class learns about different African-American people throughout history and what they have done and accomplished in their lives. We learn about these people by doing daily assignments, which consists of a quote from the specific person we will be learning about, a passage about them for us to read, a timeline for us to fill out, and some questions for us to answer, such as when they were born, when they died, their gender, their ethnicity, some interesting facts about them, and some of their accomplishments or contributions. So far, we have learned about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Catherine Johnson, Alice Coachman, who was the first Black woman to win an Olympic gold medal, Benjamin Banneker, who published Almanacs, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who started Black History Week, which is now known as Black History Month, the poet Amanda Gorman. And today, we learned about the professional tennis player Serena Williams. This is how our class learns about Black History Month and famous African-American people who has changed our society and how we live today. Thank you very much for listening.
And Mello?
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to find my page. It's not loading.
Okay, Ahima, do you want to go while Mello's trying to get herself ready?
Yes. My name is Ahima Austin Agana. My teacher is Mrs. Timmerman, and I am in fourth grade at Hawthorne. For Black History Month, I have been learning about how Black people have really helped the US in many different ways and are not just known for being slaves. I learned about a man named Bass Reeves. He was born in 1838 in Arkansas. Bass Reeves was the first African-American marshal of the American West. He arrested more than 3,000 criminals using peaceful methods.
Mello, are you ready?
Almost, my page just isn't loading, I'm sorry.
Okay. Gia, do you want to go?
Sure. Hello, Board of Education. My name is Gia Mahia. I'm in, I am in Ms. Smith's fourth-grade class at Hawthorne Elementary. In my class, my fellow classmates and I have been learning about Black History Month. We have learned about Garrett Morgan. Here is some information about him. Garrett Morgan is a famous African-American inventor. He was born on March 4, 1877, in Paris, Kentucky. He died on July 27, 1963, in Cleveland, Ohio. Invented many things that we still use in modern times. Invented the traffic light, the gas mask, and the amped sewing machine. Thank you for listening and being such an amazing audience.
Thank you, Gia. Mello, are you ready?
Can I have three minutes? I'm so sorry. I'm just getting the last right now.
Absolutely. Well, just, maybe I can hand it over to Mr. Bugby, and so his students can speak, and then if we have a chance, we'll be able to come back to Mello.
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. This is Mr. Bugby, the principal at Horace Mann Elementary School. We're always proud to say that. I first want to say thank you, Hawthorne students. That was amazing. This is a big deal for elementary school students to be speaking on a school board meeting. So, big shout out to all of our elementary kids that are here tonight. And for Horace Mann, we want to say as February is Black History Month, our school and our community have been learning about the impact that Black Americans have had on American history and culture. Black History Month officially began in 1976 when President Gerald Ford asked Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Every year since then, every American president has dedicated February as African-American History Month. We have two students from Horace Mann who volunteered to share what they have learned. First, we're going to start with our youngest visitor tonight. Super proud of you, Lila. Third grader from Mrs. Della Johnny's class, Lila Pizuro.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to share. And we are learning about several, I am in Miss Della Johnny's third-grade class, and we are learning about several people. And one of our people that we are learning about is Kamala Harris. So she was born October 20, 1964. Her first accomplishment is being the first woman vice president and first African-American vice president. Number two, Kamala Harris joined the US Senate in 2017, specifically the committee. Number three, Kamala and her sister started a protest in one. What she did is, in her apartment building, she didn't, they didn't allow people playing on the lawn, but her and her sister protested about that, and then kids could play on the lawn.
Lila, did you want to share your screen, the assignment that you showed me earlier?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I have a couple of things. My teacher also made this, which is a bunch of links, and they're just about Black History Month. And then this is the slide that I just showed you.
Excellent job, Lila. So proud of you. I love watching third graders do screen sharing. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, can you think back to your third-grade times to imagine screen sharing with the school board members? All right, next up, we have a very special guest with the best background on the screen. From Mrs. Flores's fifth-grade class, we have Talia Pinchuk.
Um, hello, my name is Talia Pinchuk. I'm in fifth grade, and I'm in Ms. Flores's class. In class, we are learning about slavery and Dr. Martin Luther King. This is really important for me because I aspire to be an activist when I grow up. I, right now, I'm just taking part in my community. I have made a club where we can actually discuss after-school civil rights, history, and social studies. And I think it's really important for us to be learning this in school because even though we can't drive or vote, we still have a voice that needs to be heard. And we've been learning about the slave trade. And, um, sorry, I'm very nervous. And we've just overall been learning about the basics of Black History Month, and we've been learning about so much inspiring people who have persevered through, that's on the Husky High Five. And we've learned how to persevere through the thick and thin, and they've, they've all experienced racism. And now we see them very famous, and it shows that one person can make a difference. And that's what I'm trying to do right now. And in class, we've seen photos. And our teacher always tells us that it's so sad seeing that cameras were even invented at that time. And that's all we've learning about, and I really like learning about it. I usually, I always talk out in class because I love social studies. So I think that's it.
Excellent job, Talia. Super proud of you. Yes, Talia does often talk out in class. Good job, sweetheart. Okay, Mrs. Kaber, back to you.
All right, Mello, are you set?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, great.
Hello, my name is Mello Fard, and I'm in Ms. Hess's fifth-grade class. In our class, we have learned so much about Black history and how important it is in all communities. Ms. Hess really has a way of inspiring us and teaching these topics. And some of the people we have learned about are Carter Woodson, Benjamin Banneker, Amanda Gorman, Alice Coachman, and Catherine Johnson. Also, in our class, we have been reading Hidden Figures. It is a book about Black people and how they work for everything they have. So far in the book, we have learned about Dorothy Vaughn, Mary Jackson, and Catherine Johnson. This book is very eye-opening, especially for the young that are not taught. It really shows even more about Black history and how we got to where we are today. Thank you, Mello Fard.
Thank you to all of our students. We just want to really quickly point out that as we look at our standards for social studies specifically, in fourth grade, it's talking about the economic, social, and political life as it affects California. And in fifth grade, it's talking about the lives and causes, lives of Americans as it impacts both the development of the country all the way through to present time. And as the standards give us a few examples of who they'd like our students to focus on, those are three or four examples. And so this month gives us an opportunity to expand that and tells us that, like, we don't need to just isolate it to February. We can expand it all year long, really talk about all of the minority groups that contributed to the lives of, in California, and also the development of us as a country as a whole. So, thank you to the students who came today, all six of you awesome students. And thank you for having us, to the wonderful board members for having us.
Thank you so much to our two principals, Mr. Bugby, Mrs. Kaber. Thank you very much to our teachers and to our students. I felt like, at times, I was listening to our middle school students with how articulate you are. And one thing that I kept hearing over and over from every student is, is how they related this information back to their teacher and what's happening in the classroom. And I can't, again, thank our teachers enough for continuing to go above and beyond, to bring as much as they can. From the very beginning, we've said, try to mimic exactly what's happening in our classrooms in virtual learning, and you continue to do that. And this is just evidence of that. And so I want to thank you all for that. And Mr. Bugby alluded to this as well, that, you know, to speak in front of your school board, in front of our entire school district right now on live, live streaming is not an easy thing to do. And you all just knocked it out of the park. I'm just so impressed and want to thank you all very much. So another round of applause. And so we're going to kick it up a couple of levels now to our high school. And again, you will be thoroughly impressed with the work that's happening in virtual learning with our high school. I just can't even believe the recognition that you're going to learn about in the type of work that our high school students are doing. If our elementary students, please hang on and stay tuned to this because I want you to see this as well. The amazing things that are happening with our educators at the high school level. So I'll turn it over to Principal, Mr. Mark Mead.
Thank you, Dr. Brighi. The second semester of the high school year is full of competition, recognition, and celebration. And, you know, our kids have, our seniors have applied to colleges. They're waiting to hear back. That's a major celebratory aspect. We have national merit that's coming soon. We have competitions coming, Science Olympiad. I'm sure some of our CTE programs, even this year, are going to be able to keep competing. But tonight, we want to focus on our VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts Team. Some of those folks aren't being specifically recognized with students tonight, but you've seen them around if you watched The Dance Company last Friday. Dana Finley's part of our VAPA team. I don't know if they'd give awards for that, but certainly it would deserve one. It was incredible. You've also seen Bill Bradbury and Ethan Smith, who did their holiday specials, which was also incredible about two months ago. Tonight, we're going to highlight four other VAPA teachers. We're going to highlight Mike, Mike Federman, who teaches art, AP art. And he's actually going to be talking about some of the amazing things that the VAPA program is doing. We're going to look at Karen Kaz Chandler, our performing arts theater teacher. We're going to also see some of the work that Tim Briggs, who teaches our photography classes, is, and we're also going to look at Melanie Bronder and her architecture classes and some drawing as well. So without further ado, Mike Federman, please take it away.
Good evening, and thanks, Mr. Mead. Thank you for that introduction. And good evening to the school board and the school district. I want to thank you for this opportunity to celebrate our students' achievements in the visual arts. I'm going to share my screen here, and we're going to start off with the, the AP. So, let me get that going here. So, um, I think that is, there we go. So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Prince Abrahams. Prince was one of fifty-five students that were chosen out of over 62,000 student submissions to be included in the 2020 AP Art Design Digital Exhibition. Students that are chosen for this honor are the ones who actually have scored a six out of five on their AP portfolio. Their work becomes the benchmark by which other portfolios are measured. Within this portfolio, students create between ten and fifteen pieces of work for their sustained investigation, which is work that's thematically linked. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Prince himself so that he can talk about his sustained investigation while I scroll through some of his pieces. So, Prince, you want to take it away?
Hello. Good evening. My name is, good evening, my name is Prince Abrahams, and I'm honored to get the opportunity to share my work and my portfolio while I attend Beverly Hills High School. And I firstly want to say thank you to Michael Federman, my teacher, for allowing me the freedom to create and bring my vision to fruition. I want to say thank you so much for that because he allowed a space where students could truly just express without limit. So thank you for that. So originally, when I started my portfolio, it started in 2019, when I first moved to Beverly Hills High School. And it was originally garnered towards religion and my dysphoria for organized religion and the expression of that through the human form. But as the year progressed and it went to 2020, and then we were all in lockdown, I felt a responsibility as a Black man in America, experiencing all that was happening in the world at that time. I felt that I had to translate my experience into my work. And so the guiding topic for my portfolio changed. It became about expressing the struggles in relation to the African-American experience in America. Struggles under structures such as sexuality, religion, race, gender, and identity. I wanted my work to illustrate these different topics through the human form in a way that pulls the viewer in into something they might have never seen before and leave with something that, with a lesson or an understanding of something they might have not grappled with before. My goal with my work was to interact with both humanism and surrealism, to express the struggles faced by Black individuals in America in hopes to fuse my art with a world of complex ideas, forming it into a side of aesthetic pleasure, philosophical inquiry, social critique, and political activism. And I'm really thankful that my work has been embraced so positively, and people have enjoyed it. And I've, it's so surprising for me that I've won awards on my work because I would never think, because as an artist, you never think what you're creating is going to be so impactful, but it's been amazing. And I still want to say thank you so much, Michael Federman, for allowing me to create these pieces. Thank you so much.
Prince, this is, it's truly a huge achievement. I, you know, I was talking to him earlier, and I don't think he realized at the time that they, how they measure the six out of five and the benchmarks. So he was a little astonished at that, but I don't see why he should be astonished. His work is really, really quite amazing. So Prince, you have a lot of, a lot of schools that you've applied to, and I know they're all going to be vying for you. Is there one in particular that you're hoping for?
Uh, I really have, there's this dual-degree program with Brown University and the Rhode Island School of Design. So that is like the bread and butter. That is like my goal. That's what I'm vying for, but I'm open to the possibilities of the future, and I'm just keeping my fingers crossed.
Awesome. Great, great job, Prince. Round of applause. Excellent work, man.
Thank you.
With that, if I could, I continue with our Scholastic Art and Writing Awards honorees here. So, well, actually, I wanted to just share a little bit more about, about what's going on with our AP program. First of all, our, our scores are, we've had 100% pass this year with AP Drawing, 100% pass. Three students, we had, actually Prince is the one that got the six. We had four fours. We have, we had, of the fours, we had one student. Of the threes, we had one student. With the 2D Art and Design, 100% pass also, a number of students. We had three fours and one student with three. And then AP 3D Art and Design, 100% pass, 10 students. We had three fours and seven threes. So the thing about this is that the, the AP has undergone quite a lot of change. And our AP 3D Design is only about, you know, three years, two years or three years old. And so there's been a lot of rapid success from Melanie Bronder and the work that she's doing with those kids in 3D Design. So, you know, great job, Melanie. She's actually at a conference right now. And with the new portfolio requirements, 100% pass with the 2020 new requirements is amazing. So really proud of these students and being able to sort of, you know, roll with the, roll with the changes and kind of adopt, adapt to something new. And a historic high number of students taking this exam is another. So we had 37 students that took this exam, and we're really looking forward to, to getting more and more, more and more students taking this, this test in whichever avenue they, they'd like to go. Now, I wanted to, I guess this is, what's next is the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. So this is kind of a representation of all the work from, you know, me and my, of my, of our students with my cohorts in my, in my department, Tim Briggs and Melanie Bronder. But what I'd like to do, just because there's not going to be a face on this, if I could get all of the students that have joined us here for this in gallery view, just to maybe to kind of wave all of you guys that did the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. If I could get you to wave, just kind of so you can see a face to the name there. Great job. We're super proud of you guys. Okay, and so now I want to just really quickly, well, not quickly, I want to show the work if I could here. And just kind of go through, we're going to start with photography. So we have Eli Masachi with a silver key in photography. And Danielle Hollander, a gold key. Hannah Sokolovski, she had Portfolio Honorable Mention as well as three pieces that also, individual pieces that also got honorable mention as well. So I will show those two. This is, this is Hannah's. And this one as well. And then Dylan Kozad, honorable mention. Nathaniel Gamboa, gold key. Shaina Saparsad, honorable mention. Linda Yu, silver key. Eliana Combosh, honorable mention. Lauren Sadigpur, gold key. Karen Lifshitz, honorable mention. Quinn Harris, honorable mention for sculpture. Now moving into sculpture. And also in sculpture, we've got Josephine Cosmose, silver key. And there's a few pieces here, I think, several, yeah. And then we've got Jessica Chen, also mixed media, gold key, silver key, and then two honorable mentions. So she has one more slide as well that I'm going to, I'm going to show. So there's three pieces of the, the tree sculpture. And then this is her second slide, this installation piece, and then a sculptural. And then for painting, we've got Georgia Evenson, honorable mention. And in digital art, we've got Tina Yang for two pieces, honorable mention. And then we also have Prince Abrahams, who had an honorable mention and a gold key and a silver key for his portfolio. So we're, we're super proud of all of you guys, and we, we hope that we can continue this as we keep on going through. And I, once again, just want to say, let's give these guys a round of applause for, for all the great work. It's, it's so much effort to make these submissions and to do, to get the work done at this level. And I once again want to thank the school board for this opportunity to publicly recognize all of these great, great students. So thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Federman, thank you for putting that all together. Mr. Briggs as well, who's also here, thank you so much. I know Ms. Bronder couldn't be here, but really, the three of you together, the, the talent that has been produced is just, I mean, this is, this is, we could, you could sell this. People would buy. I mean, this is fantastic. I kept thinking, that would look great in my house. So thank you for putting that all together. I know that that was, that was a lot of work on your part. And thank you for, our students for being here as well, for this recognition. Beautiful work. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, Melanie is here. Sorry, there are Melanie, sorry. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no problem. I want everyone to, Ms. Bronder, can you wave?
Yeah.
There she is.
There we go. There we go, yeah.
Thank you so much, really, all three of you. It's, you're like our triple threat. It's outstanding work. And now I would like to continue on to Kaz, who continues to bring student recognition to the forefront. And so I will turn this over to Kaz.
I just want to be here like every board meeting, showing you stuff. I'm going to keep it going, I promise you. We've got a bunch more competitions. We're entering a lot more things. Jasmine Singer, are you on? There you are, there's my love. Jasmine Singer, senior, she is amazing. You know, I'm so blessed, as, as are the art teachers, that, that these kids come into my life when they're babies, freshmen. And I, I get to raise them up for like four years, like their second. I, I get to raise them up for like four years, like their second mom, you know? It's so cool. Jasmine is an amazing actress, an amazing singer, but a ridiculous dancer. She's a contortionist, an aerial artist, silk artist. She's planning on pursuing modern and contemporary art in her further studies. And she choreographs for us a lot. And when we did Broadway Night, their task was to give us a song, a scene, or a dance from Broadway. And Jasmine, would you, Jasmine, I'll let her talk about her process and which one she chose, but after I saw it, and then I had an opportunity to enter it as a pre-show for a nationally televised conference from Educational Theater Association that was hosted by Tina Fey and Wayne Brady, I put this piece in and it was accepted and it was shown on YouTube in a national forum that was seen by thousands and thousands of thespians across the United States. And, but Jasmine, talk about your piece and then she's going to share it with us.
Hi, I am Jasmine Singer. Like Kaz said, I am a senior and I have had the honor of being in Kaz's Theater Arts Workshop College Prep Class. So, when we were first tasked with this Broadway Night thing, I've done Broadway Night for the past three years and I love it. It's such an amazing experience, but this year it was all online. So, I was able to edit and work with my piece a little bit more. So, basically what I did is I choreographed a piece to Wait For Me from Hades Town, the Musical, one of my absolute favorite musicals. So, I loved this piece. In the process of making this piece, I was able to combine the craft and techniques that we learned in theater class with my dance training, to have movement that reflects the emotions of the character that was singing the song. So, I'm so happy and excited to share with you guys my piece, Wait For Me from Hades Town. All right, let's see. Got to share my screen.
And while she's doing that, I'll just say, I share her with the beautiful and lovely, talented Dana Finley and the dance show which Jasmine was in last Friday. Like, wow.
All right, here it is.
The meanest dog you'll ever meet, he ain't the hound dog in the street. He bares some teeth and tears some skin, but brother, that's the worst of him. The dog you really gotta dread is the one that howls inside your head. It's him whose howling drives men mad and a mind to its undoing.
Wait for me, I'm coming. Wait, I'm coming with you. Wait for me, I'm coming too, I'm coming.
Show the way so we can see. Show the way the world could be. If you can do it, so can she. If she can do it, so can we.
Show the way.
Show the way the world could be. Show the way so we believe. We will follow where you lead. We will follow with you.
Wait for me, I'm coming. Wait, I'm coming with you. Wait for me, I'm coming too, I'm coming.
You got a lonesome road to walk and it ain't along the railroad track. And it ain't along the blocked after you walked a hundred times before. I'll tell you where the real world lies, between your ears, behind your eyes. That is the path to paradise. Likewise, the road to ruin.
Wait for me, I'm coming. Wait, I'm coming with you. I'm coming. I'm coming. I'm coming to you. Wait, I'm coming. I'm coming. Wait, I'm coming with you. I'm coming, I'm coming. Show the way.
I'm coming, wait for me. I hear the walls repeating, the falling of our feet. It sounds like a drumming and we are not alone. I hear the rocks finish shuddering and throwing our stones.
All right, so that was my piece. Thank you guys for watching.
Absolutely amazing. And I, I also remember just watching you grow up since you were just a freshman, just seeing the, the growth in you Jasmine over the last four years. This is tremendous. And for you to share this with us is just such a pleasure. Thank you so much. And Kaz, thank you so much for coming back to recognize yet another student. We look forward to more throughout the rest of the year.
I'll be back.
Thank you to all of our recognition this evening. Great job.
I guess we've now arrived at the public hearing period. I have several, many letters to read. Rebecca, if you'd be so kind as to give me a three-minute time limit on them, please?
Not a problem.
Thank you. The first one is very complete. Comment, when are we opening our schools? Jasmine Yadigar. Number two, opening schools, teachers' union. Every single medical study, Sweden, South Korea, and Norway has proven that children are not a vector and schools should be open as they are in other countries and other states. This non-lethal virus doesn't know geography. So, why is it more important here? Schools should be open now. If the teachers refuse, fire them and hire new ones who are willing to work with 30% raise as long as they don't rejoin the union and you remove tenure. Teachers should be working on a merit basis like every other working American. It is clear all these decisions are political and nothing more. Signed, Jacob Morris. Renegotiating the opening MOU for TK2. Comment. To our dear Dr. Bergy and the school board, please see the below letter signed by over 200 Beverly Hills Unified School District parents. We can send you the full PDF of signatures if you desire. We are requesting that you adjust the MOU to reopen the schools for the children most vulnerable to the long-term effects of closures. TK2 to the level dictated by the LA County Department of Health and not the number that was arbitrarily decided upon with no scientific backing. We represent the parents of students who arbitrarily decided upon with no sign of, we, who attend the Beverly Hills Unified School District. Many of us moved to Beverly Hills specifically for the stellar reputation of the public schools in this district. We want to draw your attention to a letter that has been released, that has been signed by more than 200 licensed healthcare professionals of diverse backgrounds in LA County, making the case for a full in-person reopening of public schools in LA County now that the safety and necessity of doing so have been medically established and endorsed by the CDC and Governor Newsom. Of course, this should be triggered by a shift to the red tier. However, we must start making plans right away. We are fully understand and agree with the past that shift to distance must learning as we gather data on the virus and infection and death rates. However, now there is a solid consensus among the medical and political communities. It's time to move forward to benefit our kids, particularly socio-economically disadvantaged racial minority and ESL students in a safe manner that would reverse the widening achievement gap and economic disparities. Rather than list all the reasons, I draw your attention to the attached letter and encourage you to read it as it's been endorsed by 200 prominent healthcare professionals in our own communities. We know many physicians, nurses, and pharmacists who have been privileged as healthcare professionals who have been fully vaccinated, and we want to help in any way to accelerate the vaccination of the Beverly Hills Unified School District teachers and staff, including volunteering to work evenings and weekends to personally vaccinate every single school employee in Beverly Hills Unified School District if provided with vaccine doses. Now that all the eyes are suddenly on our schools and the plight of the kids who have been out of school for about a year, we have a unique opportunity, in fact, a duty, to become a role model within the LA County, the state, and nation by reopening our schools for full in-person education for all who want it. Therefore, we can do it. I encourage everyone reading this to acknowledge the importance of this issue for our kids and families and your ability with our help to quickly and safely address it in a way other school districts cannot. I have never before seen one issue unite all residents as strongly as this. Thank you for all your continuing leadership and support amongst this incredibly challenging time. We stand as always, ready to help you and wish you all good health in the coming months. This is for immediate release, February 4th. There's a note then from many, many doctors and it's four pages long and I'm going to, and it's signed by three or four pages of doctors and I'm, it's going to be entered into the record, but it's quite lengthy and I will not have enough time to read it. It's several, several pages of doctors. And this letter actually was signed by the Beverly Hills Parents Association for our use. Number four, open our schools. Although LA Public Health has the authority as to when our school open, our Board of Education has not sent them a clear message that the majority of the parents and students want our schools to be open. Why haven't you written them? The board should listen to the scientific data and the facts that say children in schools are not what is transmitting the disease. In fact, other school districts that have opened in the United States have shown that the transmission is not from the schools. Even European countries that have higher rates of transmission have kept their schools open. Why is the board pointing fingers at the LA Public Health? There is so much you could do. Renegotiate with the teachers' union to come back. Why is it that so many districts around, Orange County, Manhattan Beach, have no problem coming back? Are our teachers more vulnerable? Put our kids first. Yes, teachers, yes, teachers may have children, childcare issues, or health issues, but how is that different from what working parents have had to do the last year? Enough is enough. Open the schools. Mark Lopez. Save our children by opening the schools. Dear members of the board, I am urging you, along with most parents who agree that our children's well-being is at stake here. It is obvious that nobody was prepared for such a pandemic, but time has passed almost a year to this day. There has been much research done. Vaccines have become available. Children are feeling isolated and depressed. Anxiety has risen to an ultimate high. Suicide rates and drug use are skyrocketing within young children and teenagers. Children are being neglected and abused. The amount of screen time exposing their brains and eyes are destroying our children's thought processes and overstimulating a once healthy mind and nervous system. If you are part of the school board, then you took the responsibility upon yourself to put these school, children as top priority. These children are the future. The future generation is already and forever will be damaged due to this pandemic. I am pleading with you, open our schools. Fight with the ALAUSD until you find resolution. The governor himself has mentioned that whether or not teachers are vaccinated, it is still safe to open up the schools. Fight to get the teachers and staff vaccinated if possible. And those who choose not to be vaccinated, as may be understandable, should also choose to opt out teaching for the next few years to come. We cannot hold these children hostage anymore. They deserve our voices. They deserve a chance for normalcy. If it is okay to sit in a restaurant without a mask, then it should be perfectly okay for a child to sit in a classroom with a mask. Let's be reasonable. Let's just not just follow the rules because someone tells us. Let's use our minds and think about what is right and what is wrong. Many families went through a lifetime of sacrifices to move their children to the school district. We are paying high taxes to live in Beverly Hills. Many of these families are either leaving the city and/or moving their children to private schools. You have the resources, so you have the resources, so use them. The campuses are large enough to even note, to do outdoor classes. Get creative, even if it means alternating school days for kids at first. Make a move. Don't just sit there and watch our future generation deteriorate. Schools are a safe place for children and staff as many private schools have been open with little to no COVID cases. Please do something fast before it is too late for these kids. Their lives are in your hands. Don't look away. Thank you. Melody, period. Where you stand, regardless of county requirements, can each board member please respond by clearly outlining their personal opinion as to what they feel qualifies as a safe return to school? For example, once teachers are vaccinated, county case rate, et cetera. Please refrain from responding with a cookie cutter. I will support what the county sets, as I am sure each member has their own personal thresholds as to what they feel, as to what they feel qualities as safe return. Thank you. Ellie Codz. At each board member, at each board meeting, letters are read aloud, but no responses from the board. There is a lot of misinformation out there. Is the board able to set up a live Q and A on Zoom in which there can be an actual dialogue? Signed, Daphne Hollander. Please demand that the Beverly Hills Unified School Teachers Union change the agreed to MOU to reflect the California Public Health's current case rate to open for in-person instruction of 25 per 100,000 so that at least some of our children, K2, may go back to school in person as allowed per safety guideline. Also, why was this agreement for the CR ever anything that followed state and county guidelines for going back to class instruction? Please explain this. Please represent the parents' wishes for our children. The school board is elected by the Beverly Hills residents to advocate on their behalf. I know the board agrees that our students are suffering. Some of it becomes unnecessary when it is safe for everyone and to go back and we don't because of a poorly designed and one-sided MOU. We salute our teachers for their hard work, but our children matter too. The agreed CR of 10 is unconscionable. It is time we give our children a chance for almost one year after almost one year of having all necessary data and safety information at hand. The last thing we need is an arbitrary number to go by when stakes are so high. Please go back and demand a negotiation of the CR to reflect whatever that real, the health departments require at the given time. Signed, Jasmine Rastagar. Hello, and thank you for reading this. You are well aware that after a year, our children and students have been affected in many negative ways, including physically, emotionally, and educationally. Many have been okay, however, most have not been okay. Most unfortunately have been negatively affected. I have three children in this district. I'm quite frankly disappointed in the BHUSD. Seeing how most of it, almost all of society is up and functioning, as well as many schools across our state, it is mind-boggling that you have not put an ounce of consideration into our innocent kids' well-being. You have surveyed us and our kids about going back to school. You have surveyed the teachers. I am sure many are not comfortable going back and that's okay. However, many teachers are ready to go back. I understand that we are under LA with rules and regulations. However, we are our own entity and that's why we live in this city. So, many schools have been functioning for months, now whether hybrid or full-time. Why can't we? You keep saying that it all depends on the numbers and the LA County Health Department and the governor of California. Well, Governor Newsom has given all the schools the live okay to go back for in-person last week. Are you still going to say that it's a risk? What do we need to do as a community to open up for the most vulnerable, our children? Please do your part as it is your responsibility to get this thing going, to open our schools ASAP. Thank you. Natasha Imani. I will not read the next one as it was anonymous. I do not read an anonymous letter. I will not read the next one, as it was anonymous. I do not read an anonymous letter. Please, please open up our schools as many other schools around us are and have been successful. If the teachers' union doesn't feel safe, they can get the vaccine. All other workers are putting their lives at risk daily and do their job no matter what. What makes teachers any different? Enough is enough. Our kids deserve much more than this, and they belong in school. Signed, Seppi Zarabi. We need our school to support our children and reopen schools ASAP. This is ridiculous that the teachers can do everything and have normal life, but they can't go back to teaching classrooms. This is one big joke. Sarah Amar. Reopening of schools. I am waiting to stand up for my children for the schools to reopen. The school Zoom is not good for our kids' emotional and psychological state. Teachers that don't want to come back to school or are scared should stay home and not get paid, just like any other job in the world. I am an essential worker and have been working throughout the pandemic. Teachers are considered essential and need to be showing up in person if they want to be continued to get paid. The Board needs to stand up for our children, for their mental well-being, and for their future. Shame on you for not negotiating better for our kids with the unions. Every other county has reopened throughout the country, and even the world, except LA in one form or another. The Board is putting everyone who stands up to them down and shames the people that want their kids back in school. It is ridiculous at this point to keep our kids hostages. The schools need to reopen enough is enough. Pay attention to the science and the scientists and the pediatricians who all agree that the kids need to go back. The only thing in our way is the unions. Shame on them. Shame on you for paying, playing their game, and using my children as their pawns. Signed, Sahar Yashar. We are deeply disappointed that your children have not yet returned to a classroom. We urge the district to prioritize a safe plan for the return to in-person school ASAP. Signed, Shirley Darvish Tabidian. And the last comment. Hello, Dr. Breggy and Board members. This is the letter to you to inform you that I, as a parent of my children, am very worried for my kids since the year ago, the schools are closed due to the pandemic. My kids are not interested to do schools on Zoom on computers anymore, and they list their, and they list their internet and motivation of reading and studying and doing their homework and assignments. They are so depressed and do not want to go out and do activities. They miss the school environment and their friends. They want to talk to their friends and play with them in person. If the school's closure is going to continue with, we will be faced with very bad outcomes regarding our students. I really ask you to consider vaccines for all the teachers and staff members and open the school as soon as possible. Thank you. Nettie Javahari. And that concludes the comments. Can I get a motion to, is there anybody who wants to pull any of the comments on the consent calendar, so that I can get a motion for the consent calendar? Anybody, any of the members of the Board?
No, but I'll be happy to make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Tristan. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent calendar without withholding any of the items. A call for the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along. I think it's now time, Dr. Breggy, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. So I want to just start off by, again, thanking our students that were so articulate in sharing what they are learning in Black History Month. All of our schools are participating in Black History Month, and we know that we can do a better job of not just making February a Black History Month, but embedding a lot of what's happening in this month, in all months throughout the school year. And we are looking at doing that. We're excited about doing this. We're working with students as well to ensure that we are embedding what we're learning now throughout the entire year. As part of our strategic plan that was approved, as you know, we are promoting a climate of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as we continue on our path with our strategic plan, we know that we need to do more than just promoting cultural responsiveness. We're looking at, it's in our strategic plan as well, to start working with somebody who is a facilitator, who can not only come into our organization and give an honest assessment of where we are as an organization, but then to also work with us on a task force as we begin to improve in areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion for our entire school district, as well as our individual school sites as well. I want to give you some information, and perhaps this may address some information that was read in public comment. Our new Tuesday tier assessment has come out, and if you can look at the bottom of that list is where we are today. So we're at 31.7. This is just what we just received a few hours ago. As you can see, the case rate is coming down as quickly as it went up. We're encouraged by this news. We're encouraged that the community is buying into what best practices are to bring down and to slow the transmission of COVID-19. And so, as you can see, we're at 31.7 today, and that is a very big difference to where we were even two and three weeks ago, when we were up to 75 cases for our adjusted case rate. So for our reopening, we did have our town halls that were very well attended last week. We had hundreds of people attend. We had three different town halls for elementary, middle school, and for high school. And so, we're very excited about the number of people that came out that asked really good questions, and we had really good dialogue. We had teachers, we had administrators, and we had mostly parents that attended. So that was the audience that we were going for. So we're very thankful to the hundreds of people that came out to be in our town halls. We had several people that were in more than one town hall, really good discussion points, and we really appreciate everybody's participation. So we've pushed those meetings back out so that if people have missed those town halls, we want people to be able to view those. So we've shared those out with people. They're on our website. You know, that's something we will keep redirecting people to. It was really good, honest conversation. So the state and the county. This may answer some questions that were in public comment. So the state and the county, our hierarchy is we work with both our state and county. We don't negotiate with our state and our county. We're in very good communication with our state and county, but they are not, they're not people that we negotiate with. They lay down the order. They lay down the policies and practices, and there's differences between guidelines and what's in the order. And so, even though we're Beverly Hills Unified, we still fall under LA County, and we are accountable to upholding the LA County Department of Public Health order, and also what's happening with the state Health Department as well. And so, we're at a point, and this is, we talked about this in our town hall as well, that the state and county have, need some realignment with what their protocols are. For example, the TK through two waiver. There is a difference for those schools that received the TK through two waiver early, when they were first announced as the people that were approved, and those schools reopened. Those schools did close down again in December, but they were reopened at one point. That's before we got our waiver. We did not receive our waiver until December 3rd. At the same time, as the county was telling us, hold on a second, we have a surge of cases. You could just see that from my last slide, how quickly those case rates went up. And they encouraged us not to reopen our schools. So now, the part where the county and the state are not in alignment is over the TK through two waiver. They've said for those school districts that did reopen early in November, that they could reopen again without a problem with the TK through two waiver. For school districts that fall in a category like ours, where we received our waiver late, in fact, our waiver was in the last batch of waivers that they offered. In fact, they haven't offered any more TK through two waivers since ours. We were in that last batch of waivers. And what they've said to us, the state said, we're not going to be looking at the waivers anymore. We're looking at the new TK through six adjusted case rate of 25 or less. The county has said to the state, but we did approve these waivers, so we want to be able to uphold these waivers. So the state and county are not in agreement, and I have reported this out and communicated this out, but I can't underestimate this enough, that there is not an agreement between the county with our TK through two approval for our waiver and the state. And so, there is a process that the county is trying to come up with to satisfy the state's approval. And so there is a safety review process that's being developed by the county, and it's going to be offered to the state as if, can this be approved for our TK through two waiver? And that has not been announced. It has not been shared at this point. So as of right now, our TK through two couldn't go back, even if we wanted them to go back. They're not allowed to come back. So as of right now, that's where the TK through two waiver is. As far as the governor's proposal, which includes TK through six, I want to remind everyone that sixth grade in our school district is not a, it's not a self-contained classroom. In many school districts, sixth grade is part of the elementary campus. And so you have one stable cohort that you can have throughout the day. Our sixth grade is part of our middle school, which is extremely expansive when it comes to offerings. And so, the sixth grade isn't considered to be part of the governor's proposal as far as one cohort that's able to go back. So we're really talking TK through five here. Where we are with TK through five, according to the governor's plan, is 25 as an adjusted case rate or less. As I showed you in the last slide, we're at 31. We are continuing our conversations with our labor partners, who have been very responsive and have been great with communication and our conversations. Every change that comes in, we sit down, we share that communication with our union partners, and we're very fortunate to have a positive relationship with our union partners. The county has come up with some draft language just today. It's still in draft form. There hasn't been an update from LA County as far as their order since December 28th, but just today, there was some draft language that was given to us. So we are reviewing that information. In fact, I had meetings all day. I didn't even had a chance to look at it today. But we are reviewing that information tonight and tomorrow to see what that language says. I am aware that it does not say anything about the TK through two waiver as far as there being a safety review process yet. So we're still waiting for that information. But I do want to differentiate, because there's a question that comes up all the time, and that is, why are some school districts open for TK through two? Well, they received their waiver early, and they were open at one time in November. Before closing, they were allowed to reopen without anything else. School districts that didn't open because of the holiday surge, like ours, we are not allowed to open TK through two right now. In fact, even with the governor's plan being 25 as an adjusted case rate or less, we aren't able to open up any of our classes right now. And so, I just want that to be really clear, that again, it's not that we're not fighting. We are every day in contact with the county and the state. Vaccines came up many times. It's not in my presentation, but I want to assure you and our staff that we're doing everything we can to fight to try to get that supply. We know that vaccines, it's a supply and demand issue. We're doing everything that we can to try to get our staff, our educators, our adults that work with our students, the vaccine before anybody else. We're working so hard to do that. Every single day, we're making phone calls and trying to get contacts of trying to get the vaccine to BHUSD employees first.
We're short. So there's.
I don't see Mrs. Marcus here.
Let's make sure we have her back. To apologize for for what happened. I I want to just end with vaccinations that we're we're fighting really hard to make sure that BHUSD employees are among the first in LA County to be able to have this opportunity to be vaccinated. So, you know, that's something that we're pushing for every day. As part of the plan for the governor, even though the legislature has not approved this plan at this point, we believe that the county language is supporting the the plan from the governor as it relates to the adjusted case rates. And it also includes a regular testing of our staff and also our students. So those are some other areas and resources that we continue to look into as a school district for a safe return back to our reopening. And also want to just put out there as well that that we're talking about stable cohorts with the governor's new plan. The there is, there's no language in the state plan or the county plan at this time about returning middle school and high school students. That involves students that are intermingling with several cohorts throughout the day. And so the the language from the county and the state is silent on the return of middle school and high school, but we do know that 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 will eventually change as cases are going down as quickly as they went up. So we are looking forward to getting that information from the state and the county when that when that comes across our desk. I just want to be able to say we've been recognized for the work that we've been doing. I know that it's it's frustrating. I know that it's a lot of information. It's complex. A lot of it is, you know, what we're being told by the county and the state. But I can tell you that we are leaders among the work that we are doing in our schools. EdCal is a communication that comes out, and it's every administrator in the state, we're on the front page, that just came out about the work that we're doing, the preparation that we have been doing with a shout out to our Board of Ed and the work that they have done, our teachers, administrators, our leadership team even had a shout out to BHF for their support. And so these these types of recognitions that just come in, when people recognize our work, we really value that, especially when we are among our peers, but yet our work is being highlighted. So we're very appreciative of that. And while this is going on, we still have business at hand as far as are the enrollment for our school district and a lot of the planning that we're putting into place for next year. And so our intent to return form, this is something we do every year. I think we get better each year at doing this. This year, we're using our communication platform through ParentSquare to push out this information, but also receive it. And so this is something, we just pushed this out 24 hours ago. We've already received over 1,000 parents responding to our enrollment question for next year. And so this is just a fantastic new way that with with a pre-fillable form that we're using makes it easier on the parent. And obviously, by getting 1,000 in 24 hours, we've never had that kind of return rate ever. We're just appreciative to our parents. This is really good information for us as we plan for next year. I know that there are some parents asking if you need to have the Parent the ParentSquare app. You do not need to have that. It it does make it even a little bit more convenient if you have it. You can just go to your App Store and you can get it. It's free. But you don't have to have it. It just makes it even easier if you do have it. So, you know, thank you to all the parents that that returned this information already. It is really valuable information for us as we begin to plan for next year.
Dr. Bregge, can I say one thing about that?
Sure.
Rebecca sent out a communication yesterday afternoon regarding how to get the app if they want it. So it should be in their inbox as well.
Great. Okay. And and again, you don't need it, but it's it makes it even more convenient if you do. And and ParentSquare has been kind of a lifesaver for us, and we're really happy with the capability that we did not have before. Mr. Seaman just joined us, and he was telling us some nice things about what's happening with the Science and Engineering Fair. If you'd like to join us for the awards, that will be on Thursday, February 11th at 4:00 PM. So we would invite you to attend the the presentation for the award winners. That's always a a great time for our students. And again, some additional recognition where recognition is due. And any questions?
Tristan.
Okay. I just wanted to run through a couple of different things and ask if you could just respond to them, Dr. Bregge, since we covered a lot of this stuff in your update.
Sure.
So first being, Orange County has a different health department, correct?
That is correct. Not only do they have their own health department, but it's even within that, like Long Beach has their own health department, like the Long Beach Health Department.
Right. So their their rules and orders and guidelines don't impact us at all, correct?
No, they're it's completely separate.
Okay. Manhattan Beach is under LA County. They actually brought their students back this week. But Manhattan Beach had their waiver and had already been in session before this last surge and the shutdown of the break, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, they did. They were open before, and now they've reopened.
Okay. Do our negotiations or bringing our teachers back have anything to do with LAUSD?
Did you say LAUSD?
Correct. That was in, yes, that was.
No. So so, I mean, oh, LA LAUSD is just another one of 80 school districts, just albeit a very large one. But they are a school district in LA County, just like BHUSD.
But our negotiations with our teachers or bringing our student back or waivers have nothing at all to do with negotiating with LAUSD.
No, no, we do not negotiate with LAUSD. Those different employees.
Got it. Outdoor classes have been raised a number of times. This is something that came up again also in the comments today. Are we allowed to do outdoor classes?
So what we are doing when with our return is is we encourage if if somebody is bringing a class outside, that that's that's a great thing to do. We would, we encourage people to be, you know, bringing classes outside and being outside as much as possible. It's very, it depends on the class. It depends on the type of technology that's being used. I do know people, I'm getting a lot of emails, people are just throw up a tent and just cover and and unfortunately, we are, we are a system that has a lot of scrutiny from the Department of State Architects. That's the DSA, who kind of govern hospitals and schools. And so we are held to a very high standard when it comes to any of those type of fixtures that are being put up that, you know, the the city could put up a tent and put a bunch of students underneath it. We could not do that as a school district. We have completely different guidelines and constraints that we we could not do that. So we encourage some outdoor ed if we if that's possible. But, you know, it's not, it's not as easy as just putting every classroom outside.
Has the LA County Health Department given permission for outdoor classes in this current status of return for TK two?
So the LA County Department of Public Health has always advocated for, you know, if there can be outdoor ed, that that we should take advantage of of what we can. You know, we we have a lot of different circumstances that prevent us from just putting every classroom outside. It just, it just wouldn't be possible. It wouldn't be feasible. But to to encourage classes to to go outside and then return and to move about is is definitely something that's encouraged.
In terms of the MOU, this is part of negotiations with the teachers' union. Is that right?
So.
It's not, it's not something that we can unilaterally demand or adjust without agreement of the union?
So I mean, you know, there there hasn't been a a statement from, you know, you're you're not seeing the governor say, you know, you, you know, we're requiring you to go back. You don't see the county saying we're requiring you to go back. It's it's that they make recommendations when they feel that it's safe. They've changed those recommendations. And so as I've shared with you, Governor Newsom's plan of TK through six, even though we're TK through five, is the 25 adjusted case rate. That is a, that that's a recommended amount, saying it's safe to bring students back. So that's, you know, our job then is to, like we have with our our staff, our teachers from the very beginning, we just, we should, any changes that come in, we we sit down, we talk about them, and we are continuing to do that. We're keeping those lines of communication open, but that that is done through a negotiation process.
And the number that was chosen chosen in this MOU that was negotiated of 10 was actually above what was recommended at the time, what the metrics were at the time, we're leaving the purple tier, right?
Yeah, so I'm glad. I'm glad that you brought that up. So, right, because if you remember, if if you look back to the times that we were doing our negotiations, we were using the metric system that the state told us to use, which was the seven or below in the red tier. That's the system the state told us. This is, these are your guidelines. This is what we want you to use with your labor partners. That's what we used. So we actually, at that time, we were just above, I think we were at maybe even 15 or 16. When we came up with 10, it was, it was still a within reach of what we thought would be coming down at that point. But we came up with 10, which is still in the purple tier. So we actually negotiated, because it was seven or below, we negotiated 10. And if you think back to those, before the surge, we were hovering anywhere between seven and like 15 as a adjusted case rate. So when we made that agreement, it was within that range of what we what we could see go up and but also come down.
So it wasn't just arbitrary. We negotiated that based on the information. It was after we agreed with the teachers' union that this was going to be our MOU that the that the governor and the health department started talking about changing the numbers for the threshold to return.
Right, because the in the very, from the beginning, we were told that use this metrics as your guide, which was the seven or below, you know, in the red tier is when it's safe to open schools. What we couldn't predict then is that they were going to change the definition of of when it's safe to open up schools, which is now more than three times what it was when we negotiated that figure.
Did they give any reason for that change? Did they back that up with any kind of evidence or science or?
We've, we've asked for that. We've, we've asked for, can you share us the background data on why you picked 25? So that we can share that information, and we do not have that. We do not have the background. We do not have that data. You know, I, I believe that we're doing everything we can to help mitigate the risks when students are back, but that that certainly was not something that we had any collaboration in. That was just, we were, you know, surprised just as well as the rest of the state.
So I know that Beverly Hills is its own independent entity, but Beverly Hills Unified School District still is required to follow the law, which requires us to comply with LA County and state health orders, correct? So being our own entity does not preclude us from having to follow the law, correct?
We are one of 79 other school districts in LA County, and we are bound by the requirements of the LA County Department of Public Health.
Okay. And at this time, none, no schools are allowed to be open fully. Is that right? The ones that have been allowed to come back, come back in cohorts and in hybrid version, but there are no schools that are back in full.
Yeah, we're not aware of any schools that are back in full. We we know that some schools, some school districts that are private have had, have been able to use their their K two waiver and they're they're having 25% of their students to come back. They've been able to use that as as to bring back some additional students, but we're not aware of the middle school, high school students being back at all because of the changing of classes.
I just want to pivot to the intent to return form. It's a little bit early. A lot of families who've applied out to private aren't going to know if they've been accepted. Are we going to do an update of the intent to return form like in April sometime so that we can get updated numbers? Because I know sometimes it changes.
I believe we did that last year, but Ms. Chisholm can jump in. I think that we tried to get as much early information as we can. You know, because I want the board just to keep in mind too that when we look at staffing, we need to look at what our staffing needs are by March 15th. And so that that kind of sets some of of what we need, that planning, you know, back really early. But I do know that we've, we pushed that later, and maybe Ms. Chisholm can give more specific.
So last year, we just sent out a little bit later, but because of the pandemic and trying to plan and making sure we have all the information for March, we decided that it was best to start early. I've had some parents actually reach out to me directly and ask how they should respond to the intent to return if they have applied outside of the district. And what I've, what I've indicated to them is if you intend to go to the school that you've applied to, then say no. And then if it changes, let us know.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I finished Tristan. All done? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, Yoni, I know you've been waiting patiently, and I'm waiting to hear your report. So go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. The past two weeks have been great. Students are continuing with their daily routines. And because of the three-day weekend, I feel like everyone looks rejuvenated and energized. Luckily, we are blessed to have two three-day weekends in a row. Aside from this, I would like to speak a little about the branding guide and ASB's feeling towards its regulations. Throughout the year, we have had to follow the branding guidelines, and ASB feels like this has only limited our school spirit. Let me add some points to strengthen my argument of why the bright branding guide should change. First of all, we are, we are only limited to five colors and five fonts. The colors being orange, black, white, and two shades of gray. We are so limited in colors that we can't even use pink or red for Valentine's Day or green for Saint Patrick's Day. Every flyer has begun to look the same, which leads to confusion among students. Because of these restrictions, we feel as if we are bound and creativity is stifled all around. For instance, each of the four high school class Instagrams look almost identical. In addition, the class of 2022, their Instagram was started last Friday. And later Friday night, we received a message that the profile picture was not appropriate and had to be changed with no reason whatsoever as to why. This is not the first time something like this has happened. This strength, this strict enforcement of the branding guidelines has also caused other issues for the student body in ASB. For example, the senior class expressed their anger about not choosing their own apparel designs in highlights his article that bashed ASB for letting the senior class down. If only students knew how much ASB does to make sure that we have a fun senior year and that due to regulations, many of our ideas have been shut down. Anger has been misdirected right at ASB for something that they could not control. For something that was meant to, for something that was meant to unite us, this branding guide has done nothing but divide us. This is not to say that the branding guide should be ousted. One great thing about the branding. One great thing about the branding guide is that we have a bunch of logos that we can now use that we never had before. I think this is amazing, but I do not think that we should be limited to just these. Instead, these logos should be some of the multiple options that students have the creativity to put together for any flyers, posters, or anything that they want to put it, put together for their events. The whole issue of the branding guide and its enforcement brings up the, the question of whether the district favors unity and creativity in its schools or sitting, or sticking to this new brand that has been developed. ASB and I think that the decision should be clear. By getting rid of these restrictions, I am sure that we will see increased happiness and unity in our schools. I'm hoping to make this a new, an item on our agenda at the next meeting, so we could hopefully vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoni. Very interesting situation. Any board member want to make a comment or question? Okay, okay, moving right along. I'm sorry, I didn't say, yes.
That's okay. I'll try to be, I'll try to be quick. It's my understanding, and maybe Rebecca can clarify, that you don't have to use the brand assets. You can make a shirt, you can make a whatever you want that says ASB in Beverly Hills without using our assets. The guidelines are there so that if you use the assets, there are proper ways and improper ways. Rebecca, is that correct?
Yes. So I actually attended an ASB meeting a few weeks ago and I've been in really close contact with working with them. I think there've been a few miscommunications. So if you are going to use an asset, for example, the Instagram account, Yoni, that you were talking about that was created the other day with the logo, that was using the old logo that was slanted and it was more of a red color than an orange color. And that was replaced with the new logo that is level rather than on an angle. And so the request was that they just switched it if they were going to use our assets to the newer one, so it was updated. It wasn't that we were asking for them to remove or stifle their creativity. We've also communicated that if you're going to use our fonts or if there's a specific situation where you're thinking, you know what, this is a slime event and it would be so much fun if we could have a little bit of creativity in this. I've totally encouraged that you can use a slime font, maybe something that has little dangly slime bits coming off it for the main title. But that anything that's more of the copy or the body of the text, we, that we stick with as much as possible, those fonts to just reinforce that consistency. In terms of the ASB amazing designs that were submitted, I saw so many, I mean, eight or nine that were actually really in line with the branding guide. And they were creative and they were hand drawn and some of them, some of them replicated the lily pond in Beverly Hills, absolutely amazing. And I, I was so impressed with everything that they've been able to do. If it's Valentine's Day, if it's breast cancer awareness day, it's absolutely appropriate to use pink. You'll see that the middle school created a great, great flyer the other day that was pink and beautifully branded. They put on the BBMS logo. They said, you know what, the green isn't going to look so good with, with what we're trying to go for with this. So they used a white logo rather. So we've given you guys lots of options. Sorry, I'm here at the middle school now and I've got a mask on to be respectful of the other people who are working. So we've given lots of options for how to incorporate that and we've seen some great, great things happen. So maybe we can meet and talk again about if you're feeling stifled, some more options and how we can get around that. But I want to make sure that if I, if I haven't done a good job in communicating those options, that I reassess that and I really thank you for that feedback, because that's really important that we have that conversation.
Thank you so much. And just as a sidebar and a little bit anecdotally, when I was at Beverly, each class had their own mascot, separate from the Norman. The Norman was everybody. But as the class of 1991, we were chilly willy. So the T-shirts that we made for junior senior night and then when we were seniors, they had, I literally still have it. I should bring it to the next meeting because the thing has fallen apart. But you know, I think there has to be some flexibility. I know the seniors had an issue with some of the senior apparel that they were designing and absolutely should have free rein on things like that. But I just, I, I know the importance of branding, the importance of branding and marketing and I wonder if the two of you working together can't yield a better result on this, since we have such great representation on ASB and such great representation within our branding, marketing and, and communications department. That's all.
Yeah, thank you. If we could just respond really quickly. So I guess, I guess it was a misunderstanding. So, so we can use like any colors for, for, for like flyers and is that true?
So definitely if, if we're trying to create a flyer and there is a situation, for example, Valentine's Day, the theater was putting out a great Valentine's opportunity for one of the productions that's coming up, which is going to be fantastic. And we already have an El Rodeo red color. So if you're using a red, go ahead and use the El Rodeo red. If it's kindness week and you're wanting to use that yellow color, let's go ahead and use the color that we have as an alternate for Hall Phone. If it's a blue color, why not use the Hall Phone color? So it's the idea that that's our starting point. We want to give people in the, in the community and, and, and beyond the idea that we have a really professional basis for out, for everything that we're putting out there. But if you're feeling like you're feeling stifled or your creativity is super limited, then it's important that we have those conversations and revisit it. I think there's room for flexibility in everything that we create and we certainly want to encourage students to go beyond just those colors, if that's something that they really need. But if we can, as, as much as possible, stick to those colors, I think it does lend itself maybe to more options than, you know, you've got purple, blue, red, green, yellow, gold, black, two different grays. So I think we have some room to move, but if it's beyond that and you think, you know what, I need an aqua blue color, let's revisit that and see what the situation is and, and talk it through. But I think that we have some room to move in that and, and I think it's really important feedback that we have those conversations.
I think we've come a really long way too. If you, you think back to a year ago, when, you know, just before, we, we were still having some in-person meetings. I think that we had eight different color green T-shirts from Beverly Vista Middle School, like eight different ones that we put out. So we've come a long way and I just think that, you know, that, that alone has been tremendous progress. But, you know, to, to consistently, you know, re, relook at what we're doing and how we're doing, I think we've done a remarkable job to get to where we are today. And I just think some on, more ongoing conversations and we'll get to where we need to get to.
Thanks, guys.
You're muted.
This is Marcus, you're muted.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, motion for the next item, 12A, please.
I'll make a motion for the approval to purchase furniture from New Tangram by utilizing piggyback contracts and contracts from cooperative purchasing organizations.
Thank you. In a second.
I second.
Thank you, Tristan. Any discussion, any questions? Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I see, I think Ciara is on tonight, so hopefully she'll be able to answer this. As far as getting rid of old furniture, we understand that when the classrooms are moved, the old furniture is not going into the new building and will have surplus furniture. What is the procedure and process for getting rid of it or moving it or whatever? So we don't continually become this storage of old furniture, as I will bring up the example of the Horseman parking lot. So I'm, I want to make sure that we have plans in place not to have to go through that again.
Are you able to answer that one, Wade?
Yes, I can answer that, President Marcus. Yes, so we'll inventory what we have in the, in the classrooms that are being moved to the new facilities. The instructional furniture will be the new furniture because frankly, teachers teach differently now and they need flexible furniture and, and we're excited about that. If there are certain pieces that are fairly new that can be reused, we'll, we'll see where we can reuse those in the district. But as trustee Noah pointed out, we don't have a lot of storage space. So we will go through this fairly quickly, the furniture, we'll inventory it and then we'll bring it to the board, a list to the board to declare obsolete. And then we'll dispose of it based on the ed code. A lot of times we'll look to local schools, public and private, to see if they're, they have a need for furniture. But then after that point, we'll, we'll need to get rid of it based on standards.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Wade.
Question about that, can that be offered for sale in any way? Or is it a matter of not being able to show it or whatever and put it on like a chance to offer it? Just for, you know, we don't get into that, I guess.
Yeah, no, there is, actually, there is a provision in the ed code to actually offer it for sale. So we'll go through all of that with the board and let the board know if it has any value. Sometimes it just doesn't have any value.
Okay, thank you. Okay, call for the question. Pam, can you do a roll call, please? Roll call.
Pam, you're on mute.
You're muted, Pam.
Sorry, I undid my face, not my mouth. Mr. Krishanian, you get to vote.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Five and O, thank you. Item number 12B, I need a motion.
I'll move approval and authorization to purchase the uninterruptible power supply, battery equipment and cabinets that will supply backup power for the relocated radio server room at the Beverly Hills High School STC building from Vector Resources, Inc., EBA Vector USA, by utilizing CMAS contract number three dash 19 dash 70 dash 0876 AS.
And I'll second the motion. Is there any motion moved and seconded by Mrs. Walker Schuman and Mrs. Marcus? Is there any discussion or questions on this? No? Okay, call for a roll call, please.
Mr. Krishanian?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes. Passes five and O, thank you. Okay, next, the communications from the board members. Mr. Krishanian, I will call on you first.
Thank you. Students, we are having a Kona Ice fundraiser that will be held on February 11th and 12th. So make sure to place your orders soon by using the link that was sent today by ASB to all of your emails at 4:05 PM. Next, our Valentine's giveaway ends on the 12th and we are in the process of planning a dog show that will be on the 25th.
That's it? Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Wells.
Well, just thank you to all the students for sharing their work with us this evening. It was really wonderful and so impressive and just a joy to see. So I really appreciated that this evening. And with regards to return to school, I hope that our community can be patient with us and I feel like our communication is getting more streamlined and will continue to do so. And just know that we have the desire to have the students back in school as soon as possible. And I believe we all want the same thing. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes. I, there's so, there's so many things to cover, but in the, in the interest of keeping it brief, I think we've covered a lot. I would like to remind everyone that we actually have a drive-by Valentine giveaway for our seniors. The senior graduation committee has put this together. We've got a special treat for our seniors and we would like to encourage everyone to come with your masks, socially distance, drive by and pick up your treat because we want to start celebrating our seniors the way that we haven't been able to this year because of the pandemic. So this is taking place on Friday between three and five. It's at the corner of Durant and Moreno. Please drive by, drive your cars, decorate your cars, come and celebrate and feel celebrated. We'll be out there handing out little treats.
Is there a prize for the winner?
Everybody gets a treat on this one, all the seniors.
That's a great way, that's a great idea. Okay, Mrs. Dr. Stern?
I just want to say I was blown away by the presentation of the visual arts presentation, as well as the artwork that was done by the young man who is looking forward to going to art school. Since I have not been out in a year, over a year, I haven't been to museums or any live performances. It really was a treat to see not only that it was from our own district, but just how incredibly sophisticated some of these kids are. Also, the, the elementary school kids who, who spoke about Black History Month, they were so articulate and poised and I loved to see the pride that was so inherent in the teachers who watched them on the screen. That was very nice to see. In terms of the, you know, returning to school, as I believe two weeks ago, we were at like 48 for the adjusted case rate. So what I'm saying is we all want the same thing and I see some progress towards dropping and getting this behind us. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stern. Mr. Margot?
Thank you, President Marcus. Yeah, so shout out to all the kids. The Jasmine with the dance performance and all the art students and especially our, our elementary kids. You know, in third grade, not only could I not talk to a board, I, I was barely forming sentences. So it was so impressive to see these kids and be so self-aware of the fact that some of them were nervous or uncomfortable, but just went, got through it anyway. It was really wonderful job. Hats off to Ms. Kaber and, and Mr. Bugby for that. I did want to address, and I normally don't do this, but there were a couple of comments made during public comment that I have very thick skin and I've been dealing with this for quite a long time. But there were a couple of things that were said that I wanted to bring up and, and answer. And that was, we were accused of not caring about kids' wellbeing in one of the letters. And I, and I'm thoroughly insulted by that because everybody that you can see on this screen right now, that's what they do on a daily basis. And not only they do it for your kid, they do it for every kid in the district and they do it every day, all day. We are working behind the scenes as hard as possible to get our kids back in school. So if the people who wrote those letters today would actually read what Dr. Bregy sends out, understand what the county is doing and not doing, because there's a lot of inconsistencies, as Dr. Bregy pointed out, you would understand, oh, you know what, my district is doing everything they possibly can to get kids back in the classroom. And I'm proud of a district that has put all the safety procedures in place and protocols in place to be ready to come back. They have done everything they can to make sure that when the kids return, the schools are ready to make this operate until this pandemic is over, which, which we all have to accept won't be for a while. And then another parent said shame on you to us. And, and I'm sorry, I, I called that one out and I do not appreciate that approach to trying to understand what we are trying to do. Just, just thinking you can write a letter to a superintendent and a board and a staff and just make blanket statements not based on fact at all, not having done the research, is indicative of a larger systemic problem. But I think, I, I have been throughout this whole pandemic, when, when President Hacker had, had to serve her entire term basically under a pandemic and now President Marcus is working under the same parameters. And I think about Mayor Friedman as well, that he'll serve his entire term as mayor on Zoom. And nobody, when we signed up for this, nobody thought it would go the distance like this. Nobody thought. But the reason it has is because people didn't listen, right? People didn't mask up, they didn't social distance and they didn't really care. So when California wonders, why are we so behind the curve, we kind of did it to ourselves. So we can't sit there and blame people who have done everything they can to try to get normal back while we're the ones that, that were causing the problems. So I, I, I am encouraged by the numbers, Dr. Bregy, but I'm more encouraged by the dedication of your staff and of my four other colleagues who have, day in and day out, are racking their brains on what we can do to make sure kids get back safely. And that's the key word, safely. Because from my perch, I do not want to see one teacher or staff member get sick or even worse, because we opened up too soon and we didn't open up correctly. That's our purview and I will be proud to stick with that as long as it takes in order to make sure that everybody is safe, because that's the first thing and then everybody is educated that follows. So thank you and have a good week.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Very well spoken. I would just like to, the, most of the comments during the, or previous board members dealt with the wonderful performances of the kids tonight. And that is a tribute to our fact that our kids are getting a good education and they are learning and they are moving ahead. And I will stake my reputation basically on the fact that I stand behind what our kids are getting in the schools today. And I'm very proud to have been able for the community to see what they're getting in that respect. But I would also like to mention something that was really. But I would also like to mention something that was really unbelievable this week and that was the unbelievable Modern Dance Company's show. That was spectacular as far as I was concerned. The skill the kids showed, the creativity, the visual effects, the settings, the costumes, the choreography, the, all the work and the way it was put together. I mean, it was, it blew me away and I have to tell you, if, what they were able to do, the resilience of those kids to put on a show like that is amazing. I don't know how many maybe didn't see it and if it's still out there, go and look at it. You'll be amazed at it. And, and it just shows that we are still doing marvelous things in our district. And I agree with you, Noah, on those comments from the parents that came in. We are doing everything we can to ensure that when our kids go back, they're going to go back with safety. And that's number one and number, in our, in our minds. Sure, I want them back, but we have to remember that there's other people that are involved also and some of the parents are very vocal for theirs, but they have to look at the facts and they have to see what we're up against. So with that in mind, I thank you all for a wonderful evening, great meeting. Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight on Tuesday, the 23rd. I look forward to seeing you all then, if not sooner, either virtually or whatever. Have a great two weeks. Good night, everybody.
Good night, President Marcus. Thank you for your leadership. Good night.
Stay healthy.
Good night.
Bye.
Everybody.
You too.